October 1st Ashland School Board Meeting to Order. The first item or second item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Glenn and Steve are absent with notice. In our packet we have the minutes from the September 3rd School Board Meeting. Any comments or edits? I do not have any.
On the first page, get to it, but. A first paragraph in the Principles Report. What does S Y mean?
School year.
School year. I was thinking fiscal year, so I'm saying, what is S? I know what F is, but I couldn't think of what S was. All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Are we in favor?
I don't know whether we can do that or not.
You're okay, Jamie, but you're abstaining. I'm sorry because you weren't there, but you're. Because we do have a quorum. The majority has voted in the affirmative.
Privilege of the floor. Communications, the budget development timeline for 2020, 2021.
In your packet, you have the timeline based on prior year's timelines for your consideration and review. There are some of the dates that the board usually schedules in November for themselves. And then, once the SAU budget hearing is set and voted on, then we move toward voting on the budget revenues and the warrant. And then, at some point, we present in December to the Budget Committee. Then we vote, the board will vote on a default budget. And schedule, the Budget Committee schedules the budget hearing. The deadline is by the 3rd Tuesday in January per RSA. And then, the rest are, January 27th is the last date to post the warrant budget and the default budget by RSA. Traditionally, we've had the first deliberative session at the, prior to the board meeting in February. And then, the other two dates in March are per RSA as well.
So this evening, it might be helpful to, at the very least, set the November, the additional work sessions. Generally, November 5th, we provide the board with the budget. So we hand it out that evening and we give a kind of general overview. And then, we've had typically one or two sessions to help work through the various accounts. So I do know that November 12th, there is an interleague school board meeting. So that night is, we're not available. The 11th is, obviously, it's a holiday. And generally have tried to maybe do it like the 7th. I think last year, we did a Friday afternoon to.
Yeah, we did that 3 to 6 last year. And then, we didn't need a second one, if I remember correctly.
So I'm not sure what people's availability is. People have calendars that we could. Thursdays will be difficult because of, yeah.
Negotiations. Once that's said.
Yeah.
But certainly, they schedule on tonight.
Should we try to do the 7th or 8th?
The 7th, we just were.
I used that that would be different.
That may actually turn out to be a little difficult. So the 6th or the 8th?
At this point, I could do either.
The 8th I can do, but I can probably be here at 3:30.
Okay. Sandra, who's there?
I'm off on Fridays, that's not a problem.
Okay. Is 3:30 enough time, Jamie? I mean, if you're.
Yeah, I'm usually back in town.
Okay.
20 past.
So do you want to try 3:30 to?
6:30?
6:30 on the 8th?
Sure.
I know that's probably not the way everybody wants to spend your, beginning of your weekend, but thank you for that. And they do a great job. Shannon works really well with the staff to prepare a budget that's really understandable. So at least now we'll have good information to share.
I would like to say that the chairman of the Budget Committee did ask if we couldn't get the budget to the Budget Committee earlier. And I said I didn't believe that was possible.
I was hoping to follow up with you and have a meeting with the town managers just to share the process once we had the dates approved this evening. I thought that would be helpful to just.
Sure.
To extend that information. The SAU meeting has not been set yet. We'll work to try to do that. So as soon as we know that, we can share that with folks. Usually have tried to have the meeting the same evening so that SAU budget gets set. That then fills in a number for the Ashland budget.
Were we going to, were we going to set a second workshop date or just go off of that?
We can certainly set a second one, too. Maybe, is there a day of the week that is not good for people? I know Thursdays are not good for Sandra.
Especially the 14th.
I was going to suggest would the 13th be an option? November 13?
That works for me.
And what time would you want to start?
Anything after 3:30 is good.
Oh, I don't even get out of work till 5:00.
Okay.
Yeah, can we, that would be ideal to set it a little bit later.
Do you want to do 6?
6.
The 6 o'clock? Does that give you enough time, Sandra?
Yeah, I'll just come right from work. So if you want to set it at 5:30.
5:30?
5:30 is, yeah, the earlier, the.
Okay. So that works for you, 5:30?
Yeah, I'll just come right from work.
Does that work for you, Jamie?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right, so we'll say 5:30.
To 7:30?
To 7:30?
Yeah.
I think that might give enough time. Okay. So November 8th, 3:30 to 6:30. November 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30. And we'll work on getting the December date for the board, for the SAU meeting scheduled. And then, certainly, the Budget Committee will work to get that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the administrative report, so Shannon?
So you have in front of you an enrollment report, but as always, you have additions to make. So we have a handful of new students coming in after Columbus Day and one new one registered this week. So after Columbus Day, our total will be 174. We have six new students enrolling.
Next up is the school data presentation.
So I want to start with just pointing out a few calendar things coming up at the school. This week, we have a flu clinic for students. We'll follow that up by a flu clinic for staff. School Picture Day is the 8th. We have an early release on the 11th where we will be doing first aid and CPR training for coaches and other assorted staff. Parents will be doing Medicaid billing training. And teachers will be working on learning summaries. Something new this year, our new music teacher is taking our chorus kids to the Children's Chorus Festival at Plymouth High School, Plymouth Regional High School on the 19th. So that's a new thing, and that's really exciting. We have vision screening on the 25th for students. And then, we round off the month with our Halloween parade on the 31st, which is the scariest and best day of the school year. Scary for me to have all the kids out and about, but everyone makes it back and we always have a great time. So that's what's happening in October. I wanted to update you quickly on the Pearson data breach letters. All of the ones that we had access to have been addressed and sent. We've been working with Plymouth High School and actually just dropped off yesterday a packet that had the letters and envelopes for them to address. Problem we've run into is that two years ago Plymouth changed to Power School. So all of their data behind the two-year mark is not kept electronically. So they've been struggling with that. We've been struggling with it. We were able to pull up old web-to-school data, but it literally looks like the Matrix. And Mr. Brennan has been, you know, matching codes and trying to get lists for us. So many of the addresses we have are like nine years old. But we do our best to get those letters out and just let parents know. So that's that. I have a copy of some data. And this is data from the last two state tests, which occur in the, the last three state tests, which occur in the spring, as well as NWA data, which we test students in the beginning of the school year. That's the N W E A data. So we have a few different comparisons going on. So one thing I want to point out from the start is that the state, the New Hampshire State Assessment is vastly different from the NWA test. We've had only a few years of the New Hampshire State Assessment in place. It's been changed a few times. We had the Smarter Balance Test prior to that and then the Kneecap Test prior to that. So we've gone through a few kind of versions of this end-of-year state test. The current one that we use is far different than anything we've, you know, worked with before, where the NWA test is an adaptive test. So the more questions that are answered correctly by the students, the higher the level of the test. And it adjusts, it keeps that data so the next time the student tests it, it starts them at that same level. And the goal is to measure their growth. Where the state test, students test based on their grade level regardless of whether they are on grade level, whether they are, have identified special education needs, anything like that. They are all tested on that grade level. And it does not adapt. So it's a standard measure like that. So if we're looking at math results, for example, you can see that our results moving from spring of 2018 to spring of 2019, we've had some in math. We have large increases in 5th and 7th grade, which would be last year's 4th and 6th grade, because this is from last spring, this data. And in grade 9, which last year's 8th graders were basically even in this score. And when we look at the comparison to the state percentages, we are way above in the 7th grade, with the 7th grade group, and below in the other groups. But again, I want you to think about the fact that our student groupings, our numbers are very small. So one new kid in, one new kid out, or one or two, can vastly change the data that we have because our sample size is so small. So while we had that huge jump in 7th grade with the 6th grader score last year, with the rest, that we aren't up to the state percentage, although we're only behind in, with a couple of percentage points in, you know, grade 5. If you look at our fall-to-fall NWA score, so that's an accurate, really an accurate measure of a year's growth, measuring one fall to the next. And you can see that the growth in each of the grade levels is significant, particularly in 5th, 6th, and 8th grade, where we had 18 percentage points, 39 percentage points, and 19 percentage points growth. So those percentages are the, it's the percentage of students that hit the target, the growth target for the end of, or for the beginning of the school year, measured against the year before. So where 66% of this year's 3rd graders hit it in the fall of last year, 75% hit it this year. So you can see that's the difference in the growth. It's their last year's beginning-of-year score in comparison to this year's beginning-of-year score. So really comparing apples to apples there. So do we definitely need still to work on math? Absolutely. So I wanted to share with you what is happening with our math committee right now. We are, right now, reviewing two different math programs in conjunction with SAU 48. We have the Math in Focus program, which we've been working with for six years, as has SAU 48. The brand-new version is, just came out. And actually, we had a webinar this afternoon with the kindergarten teachers because they would like to pilot the new version. So we have been working with Math in Focus to do that. They have given us samples, teacher additions. The online component is really huge. And where the criticism of the existing Math in Focus program is that for accelerated math students, it's a really great program, but for students who need extra help in math or maybe struggle with math, that there's not, it's not, it's not set up to actually meet those needs the way that the new program is. The new program has adjusted for that and really put more emphasis in the growth model of math competency. So we're really excited about that. And we'll be monitoring what's going on with SAU 48 as they compare this program and the Intermath program as well. On the 9th, we have Math in Focus people, representatives coming to talk to our math committee. So we'll be looking really closely at that and working with that over the course of this year and getting the feedback with, from the kindergarten teachers who are, like I said, they're piloting it this year. So it's my hope that we stick with this. We really haven't had it in place long enough to see the measure of the real impact. And the high school, where our students go, have said the same thing. In SAU 48, they rolled it in with their 2nd grade kids and rolled it up every year. So those students are just now getting to the high school. So they really haven't seen the impact of kind of this consistent application of this program across the district yet either. So we've invested six years' time in it. And certainly, going with the newer version is going to be an expense. But I think sticking with it and kind of letting it do its job and letting our teachers work with the newer kind of parts of it that are far more teacher-friendly, it's going to just be even more of a benefit. And with this new program, we'll do more training again for the math teachers. So I think that's a really important thing. So we're working on math as always. It's, you know, when I came here, it was an area of struggle and it continues to be. But I think we make steps forward every year with that. Looking at the reading scores. You can see our last spring, or the spring of 2018, I'm sorry, we had huge jumps in our literacy. This year, although we had a big, huge jump with 5th graders, we had little drops the rest of the way. But we're still significantly above the state averages in every grade except the 4th graders. So I think that's really good. Our, I think our jumps that, spring of 2018 were so significant that, again, with such small numbers, and our population, as you know, changes every month. We have different students in and different students out. So the difference between the number of students and the group of students, the actual students that tested one year as opposed to the following year could be vastly different. So what we're looking at still, though, is that we're scoring above the state 24 percentage points in 5th grade above and 11 points, percentage points above in 7th grade and 14 in 9th grade, last year's 8th graders. So I think that's a really positive thing. Looking at our NWA scores for fall in 2018 and 2019 comparison. Again, we see big jumps in growth percentage points. And where we have negative percentage points, 3% and 5%, again, that could be the difference of one student coming or going within the district when we're looking at those students who hit that target at the beginning of the year. In both categories of math and literacy, where it says incomplete with grade 1 and grade 2, those students are still being tested. NWA is a long test, I believe 40 questions for literacy and math. And again, it's adaptive, so it gets more difficult the more questions students get correct. So it takes time. And so we work on trying to get all of that data together. But we did not have the first and second graders done in time. As far as science goes, it's a little bit different that we only test 5th and 8th grade in science. You can see that our last year's 5th graders were 36% proficient and the state was 39%. So we were below the state 3 percentage points. Again, that could be the difference of one student with our very small numbers and/or less. And then, in 8th grade, we were above the state by 5 percentage points. So Mr. Gagnon, who teaches 6th, 7th, and 8th grade science, is constantly working to improve as a teacher, has been working with the 5th grade science teacher, too, just to ensure that that transition is smooth for the students and trying to connect with them on the next-gen science standards and making sure that they're doing everything that they need to do. And they review old test questions and work with students within the system to give the, there's modular tests, there's things that you can do, interim assessments in the system that we now have access to that we haven't in the past, that they, teachers can use along the way as kind of benchmarks to see how students are doing. So that is the data. I know it's a lot to take in. If you have any questions, once you have some time to look at this or think about it a little, you can email me or call. I'm always available to answer those questions. Oh, I'm sorry. And to also let you know, the literacy committee, the ELA committee, is looking at the results. We always look at these results at the end of the school year. So we don't have the new NWA data at the end of the school year, but we always review the state test results in our curriculum teams and in our academ, in our co-teaching teams. And we review the data and look at longitudinally gaps, areas of strength and areas of weakness, so that the teachers can keep those in consideration as they're looking at targeting instruction over the course of the coming school year. The ELA committee is working in this year to make sure that we're implementing the writing rubrics and the writing process that they worked on for two years with the kids, I mean, with the teachers. And also to make sure that we're doing Reading Street Benchmark Tests, which is a program we have, K-5. And the, in the middle school, Katie Chamberlain and Lynn O'Brien both co-teach some English modules and literacy modules. So they work together to make sure that they're meeting the needs of our special education students and our regular ed students with two teachers working in that capacity.
If you recall that some of the, during, I think it was the first time we had students who were sharing their perspectives, high school students, sharing with the board their perspectives from their Ashland elementary school years. That writing piece kept coming up. And so the school has worked very hard to try to work to build that stamina. Because it takes a lot of stamina to write. And really working on the rubrics to what's quality writing look like and has really been focusing on that. So I think that's to be committed to hear that feedback and to work to make those adjustments.
I remember that night that, you know, the students.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is the year-end financial report summary for the 2019, 2020 school year.
For the 2018, '19.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had an error on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
2018, '29.
We're just starting the 1920s. Sorry about that. So you had in your packet a review of the summary that I call of the DOE 25, which is that very large document that we produce for the state of New Hampshire, Department of Education and Department of Revenue. What this does is it takes all that information and kind of synthesizes it. So I'll go through it quickly. If there are questions, please ask me to slow down. So we did finish, the first page is an overview. We did finish in a very sound financial position. The facilities committee, if you recall, recommended money to fund the heating system project, playground installation, cafeteria sound system and cafeteria dining tables. The board approved that encumbrance forward of $105,000 for those projects. We returned $129,401 as an unassigned fund balance that will be used to reduce the amount needed to be raised by taxes.
I think that's great. That is really good.
Yeah, we try really hard. As the board tries really hard to be very conservative in their spending. And all the, Shannon does a nice job of managing the budget at the school level. The general funds, general fund revenues were greater than anticipated, primarily because of Medicaid reimbursements. And I'd like to take this moment to just let you know that because of the changes in Medicaid laws at the state level, it's very much up in the air how much we will be getting and what services we can apply for reimbursement this year, which is going to hamper our ability to put in for the MS-24, which is estimated revenues, revised estimated revenues. Those are the revenues that are used by the Department of Revenue to set the tax rate in conjunction with the town. And the late adoption of the governor's budget will also have an impact because it changes, it's supposed to change in a positive way, adequacy money. It changes the way the kindergarten aid is being funded. Apparently not be funded by Keno anymore. They're going to change the name of it. And we're not sure what we're going to be getting for kindergarten aid either. So those, those three situations have hampered our ability to have a revised estimated revenue. I put in a preliminary one with the board, with the Department of Revenue. However, they're not approving any because of the changes that are forthcoming. Just wanted to let the board know that. We had many savings throughout the budget, notably in salaries and associated fixed costs and special ed transportation. The savings were due to staffing changes. And we did have some over-expended items such as special ed tuition and snow plowing. The second page is an overview of the change in fund position from the end of 1718 to 1819. Let's see where we started with total fund equity. Our revenues, our expenditures, what the board voted for open encumbrances, less our open purchase orders, the amount reserved from voted. We had a special education article that raised an appropriate $35,000 with $15,000 to come from the reserve fund balance, which then gives us the unassigned fund balance to be returned to reduce taxes. Page 3 gives a little more detail on revenue. And you can see that Medicaid, we received $89,000 in Medicaid reimbursements. And I would like to note that Mrs. Dodge does an outstanding job of making sure that we captured every dollar available by having the appropriate people fill out the paperwork in order to get reimbursed. Page 4 is a summary of expenditures, just by function. Page 5 provide a breakout of health and dental. We had a lot of folks change their health subscriptions after the budget had been set. And so that's why, even though we took $15,000 from the health reserve, we're still a close year for health insurance. Page 6 is a table of special education programs and services. This also appears in the annual report by law. So the net cost of special education was only up about $2,200. You can see that our expenditures are instructional related services. But then we also have special revenue funds, which is the IDEA grant funds. Those funds will be decreasing this current school year. So it won't be quite as much as we received last year. Page 7 is the board encumbrance that was approved for $105,000 for those facility items we discussed. Page 8 is an overview of the food service fund. Cafe services, I think, does. Cafe Services, I think, does a very nice job of running the program for us, and we have a new person this year, so we're hoping for better service. We had 179 school days as opposed to the prior year, 176. And you can see that we ended the year with a slight loss, and that was mainly due to decrease in participation and a decrease in total free and reduced. We received more revenue for free and reduced meals than we do for regularly priced meals. But we're still in the black overall. Page nine is a federal funds overview of grants. We received overall $182,286. And with federal revenue, whatever comes in has to be expended.
I could just chime in here that Dr. Bartlett manages the Title I, the Title II-A, the Title IV-A, the REAP. She does quite a phenomenal job of writing grants and managing them. These are entitlement grants, so it is funds that we, the district is entitled to, but it does require management and oversight, and that is something that the position of principal does take on in this building, and that's not always the case in larger districts.
And she does a very fine job of it as well. Very fine. The next page are the charitable donations and community grants that we have. This school received, I believe it was, again, your work in writing that grant for the New Hampshire Council on Arts, Shannon, Dr. Bartlett, and see where we stand with each of those funds. Those are restricted to certain types of expenditures. Page 11 is the expendable trust funds. This current year, 1920, will probably be the last year should the board decide to withdraw the balance from the health insurance reserve to offset the health costs that we see in the budget. And that was the intent during the budget process. That's just a very quick overview. I'm happy to answer questions now, or if you have questions later, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next up is the facilities committee update.
And I will just give you some of the very big picture items that we're working on. The safety grant is coming to a close. All of the work associated with the grant monies and the monies that the board poured toward that in the general fund are coming to a close, so I'm hoping to complete that paperwork to submit for reimbursement from the state. Some of the other big items, the courtside windows are installed and looked really great. We met with Mr. Dion and Shannon and Tim, Mr. Pauquette, and we walked the gym building. It certainly would be, if you have an opportunity to go visit, it certainly changes the feel of that building quite a lot. A lot of nice natural light from those windows come in now. The gym floor repair is being worked on. The removal was done in September. The completion date is estimated for the week of November 4th. And then there'll be time that it needs to cure and will be able to be walked on. So I'm not sure if all of volleyball will be over at Holderness, but it will be nice to have that floor completed. A lot of other work has been ongoing, but those are some of the big items that are happening. The sludge removal has been completed, and the boiler project for this building has been completed except for the alert system. They're finishing up the alerting system. The new boilers are beautiful. They're really beautiful.
She's very proud of those.
I saw them.
She texted her pictures.
They're so beautiful.
She saw them.
They are lovely compared to what was down there. And Mr. Pauquette is researching what it would take to replace the system in the gymnasium building. The new playground was inspected, and there were very few recommendations from Primex. Primex comes out and does an inspection as part of a courtesy for us, and Mr. Pauquette is working on getting those few recommendations completed. And I think that those are the big items, right?
That's a lot.
Mr. Pauquette and Dr. Bartlett do a very fine job of managing those.
Facilities committee is a great committee.
It's a great committee.
Yes, committee that has run with their charge.
The next item on the agenda is the business of the board. I think we talked about this last month, the NHSP 2020 Delegate Assembly Request for Proposed Resolutions.
Is there any resolutions the board would like to bring forward or...
The business of the superintendent, general operating expenses.
Certainly. You have Manifest 2005. There's nothing unusual to report, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may
Do you have any questions?
No.
Take a motion to approve. It came in a Bill's Manifest Number 2005.
Make that motion.
All of those in favor?
Thank you.
Next is the tuition rates for the 2019-2020 school year.
You have in your packet a memo with this year's recommendation as well as prior years. The tuition rate is based on our ADM, average daily membership, and a formula established in the Department of Ed Form 25 that I just gave the summary overview of. They take the total current expenditures, less food service revenue, less transportation expenditures, less supplemental expenditures, which includes things like furniture, computers, tuition, summer schools, to come up with a pupil cost. They divide that by the average daily membership of the prior year to come up with a cost
All right. Any questions? No? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the tuition rates for the 2019-2020 school year as presented.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have to say, it hasn't changed too much over the years.
No.
You know, I think the only year that was really... It was 2016, but for the most part, it's stayed, you know, pretty much the same.
All right, new business.
The memorandum of understanding relative to the Interlic School District really does need some more time and conversation at the Interlic's side of the conversation, so I would ask that the board consider postponing or tabling this for a future conversation.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And a memorandum of understanding with the Town of Ashland, Department of Public Works.
This has been approved by the selectmen of Ashland, and it really does allow for the school to utilize town equipment, to be able to sometimes, you know, with snow removal and things like that, having the access to that level of equipment allows us to clean things up and to really get school ready, or even after we've been opened, it helps clean things up over time so that we can stay in a manageable state with snow. The one thing they would request is that they are able to borrow lawn equipment, and that's in number three. So kind of, you know, one of the things is we'll use the equipment well, we'll only have people, you know, utilize it who know how to use it. But then as a kind of, you know, in terms of being able to help support the town, on occasion, they may need to borrow lawn equipment, and if we're not using it, then we would agree to let them borrow it. So, you know, that seems like a reasonable request, and, you know, both entities are covered by Primex for insurance. If one was to change their insurance, they would certainly have to notify, but this seems to be something that is very supportive of the school in terms of our ability to really keep the premises in a manner that allows our staff to have access to some equipment that would be costly to rent or costly to own. So it does seem to be a good relationship and support. So I would encourage the board to consider voting for it.
In this agreement, was there any monetary value that had... Or monetary, I shouldn't say value, but anything monetary-wise that was changed from last year or in previous years?
So what has been happening is, I think there has been a relationship of borrowing it, but without the memorandum of understanding, and that was...
So this is brand-new.
So this is brand-new. But there was, you know, times that the equipment was being requested and then lent. And so what came out of, I think, some conversations at the town level is it would be good to probably kind of codify that relationship. So that it, you know, does limit liability in terms of who's using it here and how it is cared for and so forth. So this is a new agreement, but there has been, prior to this, I would say, a, you know, a sharing that did go on.
Can I ask whether or not this came from the Board of Selectmen or it came from the town manager?
I not try can clearly identify that.
I'm not sure where it came from, but I did have our attorneys...
I know Mr. Pauquette brought it to our attention.
I don't have our attorney review it.
Any additional questions?
I'd like the answer to that question before I sign it.
Certainly. We can find that answer and we'll bring it to the November meeting.
Old policy, oh, excuse me, old business policy, the third and final reading.
Yes, for the washing facilities.
Policy EJ-C2.
Okay, and that should say, actually, it should say third.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the third and final.
Any comments? Take a motion to approve the third and final reading of policy EJ-C2 washing facilities
Are you able to second that for the washing facilities?
I haven't been any votes on the first two, so I would say... I would just abstain.
Okay.
Yep.
All of us in favor?
Two, zero, and then one abstention?
Yes, all right. All right, the privilege of the floor, number two. All right, announcements, Tuesday, November 5th is the Ashland School Board meeting, school board budget presentation at 5:30 here in the media center. And December, Tuesday, December 3rd, Ashland School Board Policy Review Committee at 5:45 and school board meeting at 6:30.
And just a reminder, November 8th, from 3:30 to 6:30 will be a budget work session. And November 13th, from 6:30, I'm sorry, from 5:30 to 7:30, a budget work session if needed.
And we do need a non-public, so at this time, we'll move into...